Welcome everybody. Any apologies, sorry. councillor Heddington, I believe.
Councillor Crickton.
The Crick, she's not Will.
Oh dear.
And councillor Piper?
And councillor Piper is inundated with family stuff.
Yeah, she'll be grandchildren earlier, so I know.
Busy.
Yeah, he's been asked to take on local funerals within a short space of time. And he's got to get all the paperwork straight.
Okay, any declarations of interest please? Any planning applications?
Not this week. Grab a washer though.
And the minutes of the last meeting are... Is anyone unhappy with them?
Yes.
Yes, one with them.
I'm sorry.
Just trying to catch you up. Just winding you up.
Yes, I know. Well, can I propose we accept them? Is there a second one? Second one? You're the first one. And vote please. Thank you everybody, yes, okay. Now, when we look at the planning applications, I don't know whether it's all right for me to say this. But sometimes when we're talking about planning application, people come in rash at the beginning and say, "I propose", which means that a lot of people don't get to have their say. Do you know what I mean?
I don't necessarily agree, Chair, because someone can propose something. It's disgusting. So you decide to go to the vote, Chair.
Okay.
I agree.
I feel sometimes it gets rushed.
Such abuse.
Okay. Okay, as long as you're okay. And the first application, Cottage Road, three-storey, councillor Auburn. The conservation report, and this is quite interesting actually. They don't like it much, do they?
Yeah, I just called it in, Chair. I wasn't aware there was a previous application at the time I called it in. Because it was a three-storey application. So I was concerned about the effect on joining residential properties. So that's the reason I called it in, Chair.
Okay, so you've got the existing, or I say existing, this is the original one. And then this is the plan that we had before with the extension at the back, which we don't know comment on.
Yeah.
And if you look at the ground floor, it's just the second one over. This is what they're proposing now, so they're extending count the back. That's what they're doing, extending the ground floor.
And they're changing the windows.
And this is the change.
Yeah. So that's all.
Well, that's all right. Sorry, I'm not...
So that's the one that we had before, the application before.
Right.
Which is the extension on the back.
Right.
And this is the amended application.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, yeah. Oh, no, no problem then.
And from the front, this is the original.
Yeah.
That's the one that we had before. And they're reverting it back to a single bay window.
Okay.
Which is down the floor.
Oh, so they don't have a bay window at first?
They're not having a second floor bay window, are they?
Yeah, or second floor.
There's not all bay windows.
Is that a house next door?
Yeah, so it's actually managed, isn't it?
Yeah, no, that's cool, I'm personally...
I'd say it's a recently built house, which it doesn't look like.
There are really interesting mix on that street. I think maybe bomb damage or something was this street.
Yeah, I believe you could be right, Chair.
Yeah, some older properties, some quite nice ones, yes. Some have been in a very poor state, haven't they? And then some, you know, some other newer ones, a mix. It's a very little street.
Anybody else want to say anything about this? No?
I propose then, Chair.
Yeah?
We make no objection, Chair.
Yeah.
Should we vote? We're going to say no comment.
No comment, no objection, Chair.
No objections, no objection. Yeah, thank you.
I'll be in favour of that. Since I've proposed it.
I thought you were going to say something. Thank you.
Okay, the next one, Day in Crescent.
This is Fifteen Day in Crescent, erection of two-storey side extension to the rear, together with new rendered elements to the rear and side elevation. Councillor Auburn, you called it in, reason for calling, effect on neighbours, thank you.
Councillor Auburn.
Oh, Jenna Ward, yeah.
This is just off of St Luke's.
Yeah.
As you can see, so what their planning is doing, yeah, so it's this one here, Fifteen, that little bit, they're going to improve.
Okay, right.
So you've got, got it there, they're just going to improve that.
Yeah, yeah. So there's no... We've got a street scene, just to have a look where that is, Dean, if you...
Uh...
A street scene, I said, that, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably a lot of those plants where they're filling in.
No, yeah. Okay, again.
Sounds neat.
It's fine.
Maybe it's a bit...
I don't believe it would have.
Okay, shall we say no objections?
I propose no objections, Chair.
I second that.
Okay, and can we vote please? No objections, everybody.
Thank you.
Now we come to the interesting...
The last one that you're looking at this evening is berth four and five, Port of Ramsgate, Royal Harbour Approach. Application for prior approval for the installation of a 119 metre long berth, following the removal of existing berth four, five, under part eighteen, class Town Country Planning, General Permitted Development Order 2015. Both councillors, Austin and Wing, called this in, if you'd like to...
This is councillor Wing's mastermind specialist subject.
I have spent days reading the entire application and no, and actually no, the marine licence application inside out, although I haven't cross-checked the even permitted development application with the marine licence application, just scanning the marine licence application. They seem to have just dumped in the original marine licence, which would make it incorrect. I have my concerns here, do you want me to rattle through them?
Please do, I'm...
Yes, well, we put some of the, obviously, the very...
Mainly, I mean mainly, I'm asking for clarification on points where I think necessary. Can I take my... So in the covering letter, and they're out of order as well, because they don't put the documents in order, so I just read them down as they came. So in the covering letter, it describes a similar floating berth facility, when in fact, there's a number of critical differences. The new berth will be 170% larger and it will actually slightly, the angle will slightly tilt. Also, in the marine licence application, although it's not mentioned in this application, is capable of housing a 3,000 ton conveyor. Represents a significant increase on the 400 ton per hour that we did have. In the environmental statement, it's very disappointing and concerning that both climate change and materials and waste have been scoped out.
Oh, sorry, councillor Green.
Hey, should not finish yet.
Oh, right.
Have been scoped out of the environmental statement. Regarding climate change, rises in sea level and more frequent storms are well evidenced in decreasing situations when the sea breaches, sea defences on either side of the port and locals have images of water at high tide in these situations encroaching on the port location of the new pontoon and towards the cement batching plant and its exposed stores and stores of minerals and gravel. In addition, in heavy rain, large parts of the port seem to lack the required drainage to reduce surface flooding and the leaching of possible pollutants, minerals, gravel from the site. Point two, point, point two, point three, sixteen actually states the area is vulnerable to hydroenvironmental change, changes due to climate change, which conflicts with the scoping out of that option. So I definitely think they should be looking seriously at climate change and the fact that on that site, there is both waste and minerals there and they're in exposed location. Alternative considerations at four point one, the consideration of alternatives is limited in scope, given the discharge of sand and gravel is to be the sole purpose. Because that's, throughout this document, it says there'll be no change in use and there'll be no additional uses of that berth, which is very interesting. Which could be achieved through the use of a ship capable of undertaking this without the need for a pontoon. Given the cost of the proposed developments, and I'm talking about the cost, this is public money we're spending. It is met through public funding. This option could be cheaper and the cost of which could be totally met by the present tenant, Brett. So we know that we have the DC Vander Leyden, which is part of the DC group of ships, is discharging sand onto that berth on a regular basis. We have been told that we're paying for lorries to attend the port. But we also know within that group of ships, as there's a sister ship called DC Ostend and another ship that belongs to that group that actually has the capacity to discharge gravel without a pontoon. We've got video evidence of that ship, DC Ostend, actually discharging gravel at Dover without a pontoon. So I would question the use of public funds there, that we're building something that's actually not required and we're building it for one operator. So it's quite an expensive, expensive spend to come from the public purse and I do not think alternative considerations have been fully looked at. Dredging. Prior to construction, a capital dredge will be needed to the depth minus point five CD. I'm not sure what CD means, so we need some clarification on this.
Nothing depth.
I think it is. Achieving split hopper grab dredging barge, which if all permissions are given, will begin in May 2022. It is expected that 15,000 cubic tonnes will be extracted using the existing drop sites at Pegwell, which is fairly close to our coast and which can take 99,000 tonnes of wet, of wet stuff. And Dover with a capacity of 137,000 tonnes, using the present marine licence, mentioned in point five four two, which is valid until March 2026. Given there has been little in the way of any substantial dredging, if any, at the port and the routine dredging would be every 12 and 18 months, there are real concerns that the amount of extracted and dropped stuff at these sites over a short period of time, which is certainly would be significantly larger than that which would be taken in a normal dredge, will create a problem. There seems to be no clarification from the MMO that this has been considered or using the existing marine licence has been approved and this is very worrying. There's a section where it's not clear whether the MMO have agreed to the use of the existing licence. What I'm worried about is the way, there doesn't seem to be any discussion of the tide. So I know there's a four or five knot tide up there. The sandwich drop is here and the port is here. So if we take it out and we dump it at the Pegwell drop at the wrong time, it'll all just wash back anyway. But I'm also worried about there's going to be a huge amount of dredged material taken out in a short period of time, you know, more than just the usual dredge. Traffic. Ship traffic. This, this application states that the berth has been used by a single vessel. That's simply not true. Three vessels have used that berth, according to TDC's own documentation about the amount of vessels that arrive and drop, and drop gravel or sand. Marine ecology. This detail is quite worryingly, a severe risk to our marine mammals. The grey common harbour seals have been identified during the piling and it appears appropriate mitigations have been put in place. So it's good to hear that a marine mammal observer who will monitor a 500 metre radius around the piling site is in place. I've got, where will this marine mammal observer be located? And how will they monitor the designated area? Because it's quite large. Will they also record any sightings of seals? How will they ensure the seals leave the area? Because that's what they expect the seals to leave the area. And at what point will work stop? Well, in the document, it does say that as soon as they see a seal coming into that five metre area, they will shut down tools, wait for the seal to leave the area and then wait a further 20 minutes. So if all of that happens, then the seals will be safe. I understand piling will cease as soon as a seal is spotted in the area and once a seal has left the area and a further 20 minutes before piling restarts. Will records of all sightings and action be sent to Kent Wildlife and Natural England? There's two types of piling as well. I think they're going to use, there's one that's noisier than the other and I think they're proposing to use the less noisy one most of the time. But they may have to go to the noisy one depending on what they hit, with how tough it is down below. So that's quite a worry as well if they go straight to that, that one there. Marine water and sediment. This document looks at the survey of three sites within the proposed development and the potential pollution in the sediment to be extracted. So don't forget, some of the sediment they're going to take out will have been down there for years and all sorts of crap will have built up from just the normal function of a harbour, of a port. That will be taken into our SSSI and dumped. Again, this is very detailed, but can we have some great detail in layperson's terms about the baseline data? So I'll send that around. Red always, Red always tells me there's something wrong, but I don't understand what's wrong. And I think we need somebody to explain what below AL1 means, what below A1L, above A1L and below AL2 means and what above AL2, although there's nothing over AL2. I think they went to a depth of 2.5 metres and they will be dredging to a greater depth than that. So I think they should have done sampling at greater depths because the further you go down, the more likely there is to be historical contamination down there that we don't know what it is. Interestingly, there are some quite hideous words there and I have sent it off to a professor of science, a chemist that I know, and he's going to have a look to try and explain if there is anything we should be worried about down there. Also, this is about birds. Wintering birds have been scoped out of this application, given the timescale for work is between May and July 2022. Given there have already been significant delays, surely it would have been prudent to undertake this analysis and what will happen if the works are delayed and then happen in the winter month? So there's a real threat to our, some of our protected species wintering. The document states that there are no notable species or assemblances of birds, but there are starlings roosting close by and on the port during murmurations and formers are nesting on the chalk cliff close by. At low tide, birds are often seen on the sandbank, which has built up where the breakwater meets the port just to the south of the proposed development. These birds and locations appear to have been missed in this analysis, which is worrying. Inter-project effects. This is about, this is about cumulative impact, which KCC's mineral waste policy, which I've also read, refers to. The only scoping tool used here was a search of TDC planning portal, which resulted in the following statement. There are no big developments close by. And so inter-project effects and cumulative impacts were not considered. This is simply not true. Given the proposed development is to serve the existing Brett Cement Batcha and Aggregate Plant, I fail to see how this statement could have been made. Especially because this is an application by TDC, to DTDC's planning department. So TDC must be aware of the various big developments close by to the proposed site. There are in fact a number of big developments in addition to the two mentioned previously. Two wind farms, two approved planning applications for mobile phone markets being 15 metres high and a number of small businesses. None of these stakeholders, or more importantly, workers' staff, has been considered in any of the analysis that could identify a negative impact upon them. For example, noise and airborne pollution, which is extremely worrying given their close proximity. Consultation. The documentation does evidence that consultation was undertaken with a number of important organisations. The MMO, Natural England, TDC Environmental Health, Heritage England, KCC Ecology. But there is no mention of KCC in terms of the KCC Kent Minerals Waste and Local Plan, which has designated this wharf as safeguarded. As such, consultation with KCC should happen. There is no indication that this has happened and no mention of the berth being safeguarded. Assumptions and limitations. Here it is made clear that any future development of this site beyond the proposed development of which this environmental statement relates will be determined through separate, through a separate planning application and is not assessed within this environmental statement. That's a good thing. This finally gives some clarity over all future developments at the port, whatever they are, and also confirms that Brett's will need to make their own application for the fitting of the conveyor as it is not covered in either of the planning applications, environmental impact assessment or the marine licence. Are Brett's aware of this responsibility? I especially say that because Brett's weren't aware of their responsibility when the payment arrived without planning permission. Air quality, this is really worrying, given we've got a cement batcher down there and a lot of sand flying. 10.4.5 clearly indicates that data from existing diffusion tube monitoring stations were used. The closest is at Boundary Road, 1.25 miles away. The report also indicates that there is no dust monitoring at the port by TDC, only Brett, the company running both the cement batcher and gravel business. Point 10.5.14 states Brett does no monitoring for PM10 or PM25 and suggests PM75 does not travel that far. It fails to say how far and how this was assessed. This is very worrying, given the number of people living and working within one kilometre of the site. Some as, some as, some as close as a few metres if they work there and the nearest residential properties on Paragon and St Augustine's are 300 metres away. And we know we've got constant, well, I've had a number of residents complaining about what they think is potentially cement dust in their houses and would request that testing to happen. Environmental statement. 14, 14, point 138 clearly states this is, this development is an EIA development. Point 14 mentions the requirement for an EIA. Quoting at point 141, the proposed development falls under classification of a Schedule One, a Schedule One of the Town and Country Planning EIA Act, regs 2017, as follows. Trading ports peers for loading and unloading connected to land and outside ports, excluding ferry ports which take vessels over 1,350 tonnes. I believe that TDC's decision to use general permitted development rights is not correct. And given the development is both an EIA and a Schedule One development, as detailed in the environmental statement, the following planning legislation applies and as a result, TDC needs to withdraw the present general permitted development application and apply by a full planning application. That is the, I won't go into the act, but it's there in plain, plain old fashioned writing. The history of this development was, as stated previously, TDC began this development assuming that neither a marine licence or an EIA were needed. Residents and key councillors undertook their own research and you go on to the MMO site and it's so simple, their porto is very good. And eventually, TDC had to concede both were required. As a result, they should now concede that a full planning application is required given the EIA regulations detailed above. So there's a, there's a, there's just a, I think we need additional information in certain areas. I think where the dust is concerned, using a monitoring station 1.25 miles away is just ridiculous. And I actually think they need to think again about the planning legislation they're using.
Councillor Green.
Follow that. Yeah, to me, to me, there's two issues here. One is whether we should be doing it at all.
Exactly.
Considering that we're, we've got the, the, for major changes.
Yep.
We don't know yet whether this fits any of the major changes. And the second one is, and I agree with what's just been said, is needed a full, full planning application. I don't like this prior approval application.
Chair.
Because it's, it's incomplete and we know this is kind of a special proposal. So I would like it to at least come up, those two.
Councillor.
Okay, I'm going to drop a bomb in here because I'm not necessarily agreeing with what you're saying. However, as a member of the planning committee at TDC, then obviously I have to be careful about prudishness.
It's on there, yeah.
So I just think you, the things that you're missing within what you, within what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, you know? You know, some of what you've been saying, Becky, I, you know, I don't know whether you're right or you're wrong, I don't, I don't know.
And you quoted what's in the document?
No, no, I'm just saying, you're talking about environmental stuff, I don't know some of the, some of the things. However, I think what is known is that Thannick District Council has a legal obligation in the, that they had with Brett's, to replace the berth. That's a legal obligation within the, I don't agree with it because, you know, certainly if we were doing it now as a new berth for a new company coming in, you would, you would give them a lease in relation to their, a repair lease. That is what you, that is...
But that's not a term condition, is it?
No, no, but I'm just saying, you know, but what we're saying is, David, you know, this being lost, we have to understand why this is happening, right? And it's happening because it has to be done, it's a legal agreement, the TDC does it and that's why you've got this application. Now, the other thing I would say in relation to this prior approval application, it's a common thing, it's a prior approval. Now, what you're saying is, what you're actually saying is that our officers at Thannick District Council are not doing their job properly and are not saying, and, because you're saying you think it should be a full planning application. Well, the planning manager, the director have obviously said they've accepted it because it is a legal document as far as they are concerned, as far as our, as far as our officers are concerned. So I, you know, and I personally have to take that as face, as face value as an officer, as a, as a councillor, that our officers are doing their job properly. Not saying you can't challenge that, but I don't, but as far as I can see, that is the case. Yeah, of course, there's going to be issues about piling. Whatever you pile in, you can have something. And also, if we still have ferries coming in, that's going to churn up everything. As when the ferry's coming, are we going to say, I mean, some are going to say, do we, we can have a ferry and we go, no, we don't want a ferry anymore. And, you know, that will, that will churn up everything. So I think it's interesting in what you're saying, but I'm not going to go any too much, Chair, because I know this is coming to planning and, and then we can question officers. Because here, we can't question officers. And it's important that you question officers.
Councillor Green.
I think it's precisely because TDC has a legal obligation, that they're not fit to be with planning authority, that they're so... Because they're vast.
Well, you know, I think you're pushing a bit there, David, because I think, you know, I can't see that our planning department would be biased. They would, they would deal with what's before them the same as they would on any other planning application related to council property.
There have to be...
You know, there's quite a thing you're saying that they would be biased as well.
Councillor Austin, sorry.
Sorry. I think we have to start from the assumption that the council officers involved in this are professionals and they stick by the professional judgement and et cetera. However, I would want to see this go through a full planning application, not necessarily because of any concerns specifically about the application, because I don't know enough about it, but just because there is so much public concern about this. And I think it would be very unwise of Thannick District Council to put this through under a reduced application. I think it should go through a full application so that the openness and transparency that we have all across the TDC website is actually seen to happen.
Right, councillor Wing.
I, I mean, have you read any of the documentation, Steve?
I have, I have, I've read all of it.
It took me all Monday to read it.
Yeah, well, it would do, I mean, it's eight hundred...
Yeah, there is 800 pages of it. But at no point have I said or criticised our planning department, I wouldn't do that. And if you'd have heard of what I said, this started, the reason I think prior approval is no longer relevant is because the MMO determined that an environmental impact assessment was necessary and that's the game changer. So we can't continue to use general permitted development rights. And that's not criticising our planning office. That's just saying that the whole situation changed once the MMO screened in an environmental impact assessment and once the environment, and once the environmental statement also defined it as a Schedule One development. I mean, if you look at prior approval, it's, it's, it's normally used for smaller things. This is, this is a fairly big thing. So I, and all I'm asking for is clarification on a number of issues that worries me. And that is my role, that's my role as a councillor and that is my role on a planning committee and that is my role here. If all of these issues are answered and I feel happy about it, then obviously we go with it. And how, you can't have people, you, we can't, you know, we need to challenge things in a, in a positive way. Nothing I've challenged here is anything I've made up. It's all that I've gleaned from... It's all that I've gleaned from the application that was put in. And I think in representing my residents, I have a right to ask those questions, and I would be doing a disservice to myself and my residents and the environment if I didn't ask those questions.
Right, Corina.
Yeah.
Councillor Albert.
That's all.
Just to say, I definitely know that my understanding is the Bretts are aware that they have to put in a separate planning application if they want their conveyor belt thing put on it. So that goes through KCC, not TDC.
I was only going to say, Chair, that, you know, councillor Wing can ask any questions she likes, you know, that's the whole point. But what I just wanted to say was, as long as you understand what this application is for, you know, and it's not there to cause problems, it's not there to create an issue. We know, like, from the no, the concrete gang, you know.
Nothing concrete.
Yeah, no.
Nothing con.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing concrete.
That that group was set up by Steve Coombs, and, you know, and there was a lot of anti against Bretts. I'm not sure, I don't live on the Paragon. I don't know what the residents are suffering from there, or whether they are or not. All I know is you've got a major road going by there with a lot of traffic, it creates a lot of dirt. And I can also say, I can also say as well, I'm not saying it's right or it's wrong, but there is a car company that has hundreds of cars parked down right by Bretts, and I can quite assure you that they probably would not want their cars parked there if there was a detriment coming from Bretts, that would affect their car.
Well, I would like to go along, yes, and I'm sort of slightly supportive. I can understand that you are supporting your residents, your constituents.
And the environment.
Yeah, but Bretts has been a dirty word since ever I heard about this, and so there's a lot of anti feeling. I mean, what you say here about significant increase to noise and disturbance to residents.
That was me, I said that.
Well, I don't understand why taking one berth out and putting another one in will increase.
It's going to be a major construction project, so during the project.
It's right away from any residents who rent. Any, anything that's going to go on in the port is probably going to be noisy and disturb residents and disturb wildlife. You're talking about highway safety concerns during construction. Well, that's surely what the tunnel is for, that they stay well away from the town. I don't know the details of the KCC safeguarded wharfs, et cetera, et cetera, who's the planner. And I would suggest that you put your questions to them, but I feel that there is just a very big anti Bretts.
I'd like to speak.
That part of the town.
No.
Not the rest of the town. How many people do they employ? Yes.
One.
One?
There's one person on that side.
Really?
There's one person on that side, I believe.
What, 24/7?
I think so, yeah. Anyway, let me counter that. I have never, and I've been accused of being anti industrial, and I have never, ever, ever said I am anti industrial, I've never said I am anti Bretts.
Not so you did.
You inferred that. All I want, all I want is for whatever development happens on that port, and I'll be here when the levelling up developments start coming, if they don't follow proper planning, even if it's something I like. All I want, whether we have a legal requirement to provide something, doesn't mean that we do not follow due process, and that's what I'm talking about. We need to follow due process, and we need to make sure that we follow due process to the highest possible standards to protect people and places. I am not anti Bretts, and I'm not anti industrialisation, neither am most of my residents.
But due process is obviously open to interpretation, in my opinion. The births were there already, there's complaints all the time about them sitting in the harbour. Anyway, sorry, councillor Nixon.
First of all, I don't think you can possibly throw in a loaded comment about it's like just those people in the area that are particularly against that, because actually, that's a complete irrelevance. If something, as councillor Wing's just said, and I sit in the middle of this, I'm not saying I'm wrong, but if there is a concern about something, and we need to look at due process, and we need to think that this is impacting Ramsgate of which we stand, even if it doesn't affect my ward, or I don't hear from anybody in my ward, maybe that's because they don't know about it or aren't informed enough about it. Just because you don't hear anything, doesn't mean to say it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if one person alone is concerned about it. If that concern is genuine, and they have information about it, then that's something that we consider. Cannot, in any form, particularly interested in it. And it's just that group, which was said in a meeting prior to this, unfortunately by two Labour councillors, it was all right, just that group that are anti it, therefore it is insignificant. It is absolutely red herring, and we should literally strike that remark off. Let's look at this, let's see what we can do about it, let's talk about it. But it doesn't matter who is bringing up, and if it's just a few people or not.
And councillor Austin.
I think councillor Pastel was.
Yeah, this berth four and five has been kicking around TDC for a number of years, and I think the last time they put in a planning application to replace births four and five, a survey was done to say that there was nothing wrong with births four and five. And at that time, I'm sure there was an environmental impact done then. Now, whether that still stands or not, I don't know, but if they think that they do need replacing now, and they're going to do this, that we should support it. Due process, but we should support this.
Okay, councillor Austin.
I propose that Ramsgate Town Council responds by saying that in the light of the substantial local concern that there is, and the substantial amount of publicity that this issue has raised, and the large amount of money that is being spent.
Sorry, I can't keep up.
We think this should go through a full planning process. May I make that proposal?
Yes, you may.
Should go through.
If I'm going to add, can we send councillor Wing's questions?
I have, yeah, exactly. I think there are concerns, I mean, the planning application is one thing, but there are very real concerns. I mean, the fact that none of the workers on the port were considered in the noise and the dust mitigation is a major concern for me, because they will be the closest people to that site, and it also concerns me that there's no dust monitoring anyway. So it's the first time an environmental impact assessment has ever been taken place, and I think that's a good thing, it's a very good thing, because I do actually think the environmental statement has been done in a very thorough and professional way, but it's also raised some issues, and some further clarification is needed on specific points.
I couldn't read it all, actually, they just wouldn't load on my computer. I read the first flooding one, but then I couldn't read any more.
I read the lot.
Councillor Organ.
Chair, what we've got, we've got an application before us.
Yeah.
Not whether it should be something else, or whatever. You've got an application before you, which is a prior approval application. So you either go with it, or you don't go with it. Subsequently, if you believe that it should be something else, then you can ask for something else. But we are looking at this application, this application will come before planning at TDC as is, not as changed.
Just, I'm sorry, do you have to say, don't we just comment? I mean, aren't we just?
Oh, you should comment.
Aren't we asked to comment, so our.
Yeah, all I'm saying is you've got.
Advice, we would recommend, blah blah.
You can recommend what you like, but I'm just saying, you're dealing with that application.
Which will stay, yeah.
They won't deal, they won't take into account your comments that it should be something else, because that's an application that's before you.
Councillor Green.
I'd like to second that.
Oh, councillor Austin.
Also, your proposal that we send councillor Wing's question.
For clarification.
For clarification. And I'd like to propose an amendment.
Can't do that.
Because of public perception of the role of TDC, the broader role of TDC in this matter, we ask TDC to seek another planning authority to hear this application.
Right, does anyone want to second that? I was supposed to vote on the proposal and then vote on an amendment.
You have to vote for the amendment.
Okay. So, the amendment is that we ask TDC to delegate it to someone else to look at. Though I already believe they go to Birmingham a lot of the time.
You mean for another planning authority to determine it?
For example, Dover, Kent.
Deputy Tom Clark. So, is there a second of that proposal, that amendment?
Amendment.
Yes, I'll second the amendment.
Seconded by councillor Nixon. So how many in favour of that amendment?
Could you just read the whole, if you read it again?
So the amendment is that we ask TDC.
I'll read it out.
Okay.
Councillor Green's amendment is that due to the public perception of the role of TDC in this matter, that TDC seek another authority to hear the application, is that correct? Set that amendment yourself.
Yes, all those in favour of the amendment? One, two, three, four, five, six, all those against? So I think it is carried, isn't it?
Yes.
So the motion is now.
Okay, I didn't quite, I didn't get all of what you said, you were moving a little bit too fast for me.
Sorry.
So, your proposal is that in the light of the substantial amount of local concern, there was something else you put in there, and the amount of money being spent, the RTC recommends that a full application is made.
Yes, I think the local concern was about the fact that Fannet District Council is both the applicant and the.
Okay, okay, I can.
We feel that for transparency and openness, a full application, blah blah.
Right. Then add that my questions.
And then we've got Becky's questions, haven't we?
That's the most important thing.
But you can put those questions in anyway, can't you, aren't you on the planning committee? Or do you want?
I've come from Ramsgate. Here, haven't I, so.
Yeah.
I brought them here because they concern, I mean, let's face it, it's 2.4 million. Every single one of us who pays council tax is going to pay for that berth.
Yeah, well, we're already paying loads, aren't we, for that port?
It makes losses, yeah.
Oh, we have to make sure we know what they're doing.
Councillor Wing, you have that electronically that you can send to me? Yeah, just check my, go through it and. You have quite a lot of weight there, so if you could just question that. So what we're sending to TDC is the part that councillor Austin proposed, councillor Wing's questions, and councillor Green's amendments. Do you want to take a vote on?
Right, and we've got a second of for that.
We've got.
Well, it is that can't be. Councillor Austin, then councillor Green.
That's right, and yeah, so you need to vote on the whole thing.
Okay, can we vote on that? I don't mind supporting that.
Most in favour.
In favour.
Two, four, five, it's okay. And any guys against?
I can't support you, Chair, because I can't support you in my own.
Five. Councillor Young?
I think against.
Councillor Young. Okay, okay, that's carried. Just, we have been trying to clarify from KCC over who is responsible for what planning on that port, because the gravel washer and the cement batch were definitely the responsibility of KCC. So it is very confusing.
Is that in our question?
It just makes you wonder why KCC haven't done anything then, doesn't it?
Well, again, the cement batch, Sharon Thompson confirmed that the cement batch had no rights to permitted development, and that an application should be called to TDC to.
I'm not saying you're not right, Becky, but I'm saying it's the one, why hasn't KCC done anything? Why haven't they taken enforcement action?
Because the time's lapsed.
So the time is gone.
The time for the cement batch has.
So that, so irrelevant then.
But what we have to do is, we have to make sure from this point onwards, that we fire whatever we need to follow, and we do need some clarification from KCC.
I think it's important as well, sorry, Chair.
No, no, please.
I think it's important as well to, us to recognise that when we took, when Labour took control of the council, the first thing, well, the first meeting we had was on berth four and five, and it was totally unacceptable for how the officers had dealt with it. And especially in relation to the new births that they got in, and we're going to buy one, get one free, kind of thing.
This is a real.
We insisted that they went through due process, and went out for others to come in with bits in relation to the birth. So I think that was an important part, because I know, I can tell you now, that if the Tories had remained in power, there would have been nothing, you wouldn't have even had any of this. It'd have been, and they'd have been done.
I mean, I have to say, I have requested the business case and plan for that berth, and that is at the heart of what's going on here, and that worries me about the levelling up money. There is no business case or plan that anybody will give me based on those births, and I do not believe.
I have to say as well, that in relation to those births, in the conversation.
That's the issue.
In the conversations that I've had with the directors, in relation, not just me, but other cabinet members, when we was in power, was that the births four and five were not just for Bretts.
I know, exactly. Exactly, and that.
Not just for Bretts.
Marine licence, actually states bulk cargo, I haven't got to that yet, bulk cargo including wood pellets. So I am very worried about what possibly might be going on.
I mean, there will be no waste, I mean, if anyone was going to be wasting there, I mean, you know, we all know, none of us are going to want that, bring any waste in there.
Okay, can I?
Very unlikely that you bring waste from London.
Yeah.
You'd have to have a planning application for that, it's a specific thing, and it wouldn't happen. They would go to Abington in North London, that's where they have their incinerator.
Well, that's the good thing about this environmental statement, it clearly states that anything else that happens in the mission will have to have another planning permission, so, and that is the good thing.
Yeah, well, we're done with this now anyways.
Well done. Councillor Green.
See, what you just said about TDC planning officers.
Yes.
What the planning officers, I'm not talking about planning officers. It's, I wouldn't talk about planning officers, I'm not talking about them at all.
Okay, I think the fact that you said officers, the councillor Nixon. Whether it's planning officers or not, things need to be transparent, things need to be due.
I mean, you know, we can have these arguments, can't we, you know? This planning application, this prior approval is open, open to the public to comment, open for anybody to comment on. And there will be, after 21 days, there will be another 28 days of consultation in relation to the environmental issues of that. Because I can tell you now, the driver has written in saying, what Fannet Council are doing is illegal, they can't do it on it, but as usual, he's got his head up his ass, and he's got it totally and utterly wrong, because, and he's, I don't care whether it's live streamed or not.
Yeah, just a warning.
But I'm just saying, you know, it's not right.
The date and time of the next meeting is Wednesday, the 2nd of March, 7pm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair, well done.